I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission, March 26, 2024, meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the February 27, 2024 regular meeting, and March 12, 2024 workshop.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Mayor Cole, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Roller. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We do have one speaker this evening on our public comment period, Ms. Kim Gentry, in regards to the zoning ordinance and map. If you'd please come to the podium, ma'am, we'll give you three minutes or so to speak.
Kim Gentry, 1047 Waldron Road. Per my tracking and review of PC agendas, meetings, and supplemental documents, it's my understanding that the current status of the new zoning ordinance and map is being reviewed by legal prior to recommendation to BOMA. Being actively involved in the special PC session dating all the way back to summer 2022 regarding the project, I find it unfathomable that this committee cannot establish guidelines, parameters, and deadlines for changes or modifications to this project and approve it for recommendation. This project has been ongoing since late 2020 in an effort to update the zoning for the city to create areas with compatible zonings and standardize the city's ordinances to, quote, "manage growth and development", end quote. Obviously, now after two years of delay, our growth has multiplied and we remain, quote, "behind the curve", end quote. With the continued delay, this project now seems more of a tool to persuade and manipulate citizens. In September 2022, at a special session, there was a huge push for this project to come before BOMA for a first and second reading in October and November just prior to the mayoral election. In the meantime, just before the election, some behind-the-scenes changes were made to the map in an effort to appease the South Waldron community. Then suddenly, the zoning ordinance and map project disappeared from all committee and public conversation. Spring 2023, library public meetings were held for citizens to review the current map at that time and inquire as to the status of their own personal property, and subsequently request to either maintain current zoning or make changes. As noted in the special meetings of the planning commission in August of 2022, with discussion with Melissa Pigler with Volcourt, who is the hired outside consultant, and the planning commission, requests would be heard, but changes would not be made parcel by parcel, but rather entire areas would be considered. Otherwise, the project's overall purpose would be defeated. Yet, in January 2024, Mayor Cole noted per the minutes that the PC had continued to approve all requests to date and would continue to hear them and do so. In a public hearing in February 2023, I personally had spoken asking the planning commission if procedures were in place for citizen zoning requests and if criteria had been established for approval or denial to allow for fairness and total transparency in the process. There were none. Obviously, now a year later, it is a free-for-all, and the initial intent of the new zoning ordinance and map has been lost. With another election coming this fall, again, the zoning issue appears to be a manipulator for appeasing citizens. It is known that some prospective ultimate candidates are discussing with citizens to make zoning requests to not only make campaign promises, but to obtain the personal agendas of the current administration. It is my request that simple steps be ignited by this commission. One, set a deadline for the legal review and make the recommendation to BOMA. Two, publish up-to-date zoning information on the website, which is currently over a year old. Three, make final notice to the public and set the dates for the first and second readings with BOMA and approve the zoning project no later than early summer of 2024, so that this project can no longer be used as a voting influencer in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we will move on to item number three. Preliminary plat, Blair Ridge, one lot on 15.80 acres requested by SEC, Inc., property located on Blair Road, tax map 29, parcel 21.01, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by 303B Partners. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. This is a request for the preliminary plat approval for Blair Ridge and Clean Horns requesting this approval on behalf of their client. This Blair Ridge project is on a parcel that's approximately 16 acres. And of course, the purpose of this plat is to create a new lot to make way for residential development that is in preparation for a new townhome development, and that item will be next on the agenda. There is a new road that is proposed internally, and this road will be installed by the developer, and this is called out to be a private road as well. So looking at the screen, you can see the map. The property is outlined there in blue. This is adjacent to High Point 24, which is a large industrial complex there to the east and northeast that continues to build out. And it is also next to an existing mobile home park located on the southern boundary. And of course, Portico Place is the single-family development across the road to the east that's been underway, under construction for about three, maybe four years now. So here's a closer view. You can see the property was mostly vacant. There was one house. I believe that's a shed. The house is here with a brown roof. And then just scattered wooded areas. Other than that, the parcel is vacant. And the zoning map, you can see the green color is for R3, which allows all types of multifamily development, including townhomes. So these are some site photos. And in the distance, you can see the existing house that's one-story, as well as the scattered trees that I mentioned earlier. And this is another photo of the driveway that leads up to the house, asphalt driveway from Blair Road. So then, this is the plat. Of course, it was submitted in your packet. That shows the new lot that's being created, as well as the easements. So the easements are an important part of this plating process as well. And I believe there's not any planning comments. I believe there's some from Mr. Lied, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, sir.
And just a quick correction. The people who submitted this was SEC rather than Kimberly Horn. All engineering comments were addressed. However, I would like to make sure that the developer understands that this project is joined at the hip with the sewer that serves the mobile home park next door, even though it's off-site, and we won't be granting a land disturbance permit for this property until we have in hand a land disturbance permit application for that sewer line as well, or joined together as one. And that's it. No other comments.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Jim, do you want to pull the applicant up and just to make sure he agrees with that?
Please, sir. Name an address for the record, sir.
Matt Taylor of SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Yes, we 100% agree with that. The trailer park soils are actually, for their septic system, are actually on our site, so we 100% know. We've got to get their sewer going to the manhole before we can start work.
Any further questions or comments?
They'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
A motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item, item number four. Site plan, Blair Ridge, 141 dwelling units and 26 buildings requested by SEC, Inc., property located on Blair Road, tax map 29, parcel 21.01, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by 303B Partners. Mr. Logan.
This is the request for the site plan approval at Blair Ridge. And again, you can see the same map on the screen. It shows the property, and I'll zoom in so you can see a little bit closer there. So with this site plan, they're proposing 141 dwelling units, and those will be arranged in 26 buildings. And each building would be two stories tall, as shown in the plans. The city's parking requirement is 423 spaces, and that's three spaces required for each unit. And this concept plan was submitted before the change to the zoning ordinance, which amended the parking, so they're under the old rules for parking. So that's why there's so many parking spaces. So 423 are required, and the applicant is showing 466 proposed spaces. And that includes two ADA spaces. And I'll skip through these pictures since we just saw those. Here is the zoning map again. And now, this is the site plan. So you can see here 26 buildings that I mentioned, how they're arranged, and each of those will be two stories tall. And they do have the dog park and the mail kiosk areas are located basically in the center of the development. And a little bit closer view, you can see there are two entrances off of Blair, of course. You can see those there. And then this is the north part of the parcel that shows the rest of the buildings. And of course, we've been working with SEC on this so far, so there's not any planning comments left, but I believe Mr. Lied, he doesn't have any. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number five and number six have been deferred, correct, Mr. Logan?
That is correct.
Thank you. On to item number seven. Site plan, 400 Sand Hill Road, vehicle storage lot on 2.97 acres requested by 615 Design Group, property located at 400 Sand Hill Road, tax map 14, parcel 65, I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, property owned by 470 Dick Buchanan LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is the request for the site plan at 400 Sand Hill Road. And this applicant is paving over some gravel that is located on the site. This item basically was created through the codes department because it was brought to the attention of the city staff that there was never a formal site plan that was ever submitted for this property, and it basically just became a parking area without ever going legally to the planning commission. So basically, that created codes situation. There is a new owner involved, which is now why the site plan is coming before us. So it is, the use is vehicle storage and parking, and this submittal is intended to help rectify some of those past issues. So you can see here on the lot, and I'll zoom in, there's a lot of parking for that site. So you can see the amount of trailers that are on there. So we're looking right here in this area that's outlined in blue. So basically, it's tractor-trailer parking with a gravel surface today. Here's the zoning map. So again, it's this parcel here that I'm pointing to. So I-1 is light industrial zoning. So I-1 zoning does allow vehicle storage such as what is being proposed. So here's some photos of the site. You can see there's really not a surface at all. It's just, on this particular day, it was a lot of rain with puddles and ponding throughout the site, but you can see the vehicles there that are parked. And then here's another view of the site with some runoff from past rains and drainage there that you can see. And then here's another photo with the existing fencing, and it looks like some type of makeshift office there that's on the site. And then this picture is looking west down Sand Hill, so you'd be looking back toward Nashville, Davidson County. But you can see the ditches here that are existing today, steep ditches, and you can also see the coverts here at the driveway entrance. And then here's a sunny photo. Now, this is looking in the opposite direction from the other photos, so this is looking more east, back toward Smyrna. And you can just see some of the drainage and water. So here's an area where water's draining off the site. So this is the site plan. It's been submitted. That's the existing condition. So this is the site plan sheet. They're not proposing any buildings at this time, so that takes a certain layer off of the site plan. But they are proposing other improvements, including some stormwater improvements. Right now, there's no planning comments, but I don't know if they satisfy all of...
No. All engineering comments were addressed.
Okay, so all of engineering's addressed, so that completes the report.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight. Combination plat, Trinidad Benham, two lots on 17.64 acres requested by Alex Dickerson, property located at 140 and 148 International Boulevard, tax map 17, parcels 2.03 and 2, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Trinidad Benham. Mr. Logan.
So this is combination plat, request for approval at Trinidad Benham. And this is two lots that are going to be joined together with this plat, and the total acreage is 17.64. And you can see the property here is on the screen. So this very large building here is the Trinidad Benham facility. And then this is the City Laverne Public Works property with the various buildings on the Public Works property. And then this is Hurricane Creek. This area here where there's no pavement and no buildings is Hurricane Creek. So that kind of lays out the generalities of the site. The Waldron Road is here off just to the right, which is to the east. So in this photo, you can see Waldron Road come in view. And again, this is Trinidad Benham with the long roof here, and then Hurricane Creek off to the west. So this is photo, this would be the west side of the Trinidad building. So just off your left here, left of the image would be the City Laverne Public Works property out of the photo. So this is the plat that was submitted. Again, it's approximately 17.6 acres, and it's a fairly simple request at this point, since they're just joining two existing lots. And that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? If none, we will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine. Preliminary plat, Lake Woods Phase 11, 19 lots on 6.52 acres, property located off Earling Jones Drive, tax map 6, parcel 2.01 requested by Womble and Associates, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
So this is a preliminary plat request for the Lake Woods subdivision, and this is Phase 11 of Lake Woods. And they are proposing 19 lots on 6.52 acres. So on the screen, the property's there in the middle. And this plat was actually in front of the planning commission and approved by the planning commission in November of 2022, but the plat expired before any work could be done. So that's the reason that they're requesting approval again. So if it looks familiar, it has been in front of you before. So zooming in, you can see Earling Jones Drive is here to the bottom left of the photo, and that entire parcel in blue is the six and a half acres. So you can see it's just a heavily wooded lot right now. And then the zoning map shows the R2 zoning, which is medium density residential, and that R2 zoning extends all around the property. So here's some photos of Earling Jones Drive, and you can see all of the wooded area around And then this is a slightly different photo, again, showing the property as it stands today. So this is the plat that was submitted by the applicant. So you can see the existing road here, Earling Jones Drive, and then the developer is proposing to come off of that to the east with a new street and then build an additional street that runs up to the north, since this is a really narrow parcel north to south. That's really the only option, is to have a road that runs up the center. So then there'll be lots created off either side of that north and south street. And each, each street on this plan is shown with a cul-de-sac, and they have labeled, the applicant labeled. This street that's coming off to the south, I think it's called Colonel Ralph Yates Drive, they are showing right there a note for a possible future street extension if and when the parcel behind here And what else do we have? I believe that's, I don't think there's any comments left on this one either. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for staff? If none, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
A motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10. Site plan, Sand Hill Villas, seven lots on 0.87 acres requested by Brian Hamilton, property located at 441 Sand Hill Road, tax map 14, parcel 48, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Murad Taki. Mr. Logan.
So this site plan for Sand Hill Villas was also in front of you last year in August, and the concept plan and preliminary plat were approved at that time. There's not a significant change in layout with this item tonight, but there is a retaining wall that has come up from the engineer for this project, and they, after staff reviewed that request, we felt since that retaining wall was not in the original submittal and wasn't reviewed by this body, that it would be appropriate to bring it back here and let you all see the retaining wall. So that's the main item of the reason that this is on the planning commission agenda. So just recapping, this is a really small site. It's 0.87 acres. And you can see here it's in the center of the property, excuse me, the property's in the center of the photo, and it does front Sand Hill Road for the entire length of parcel. So I think there's roughly 250 or 300 feet of frontage there. On the zoning map, you have to look really intently, or you'll miss it, but it's this right where I'm pointing, that very small rectangle of 0.87 acres. So it is zoned R3, of course. And then here's a photo that shows the townhomes that have been built around it in the last, oh, really, the last two, three years. I think most of these were finished. So that'd be just to the north of the site and west. So there are a lot of townhomes already in this area. And there's a photo of the silt fence that runs along Sand Hill. So this is Sand Hill Road at the top of the image. And then there's another photo of Sand Hill looking back east. So here are the seven lots laid out, and of course, each of them has a driveway with parking in the front, and then there's the proposed road or more or less a driveway that would access all seven lots. And that helps with safety concerns on Sand Hill for traffic entering and exiting the road. The retaining wall is north of these lots. It's this line running east and west here. So that marks the retaining wall. And it does vary in height. You probably remember the discussion two weeks ago, but I think it varies in height from about four feet to seven, seven feet. So for now, that completes the report, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Lied. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Hamilton, on his detail of how to build the wall, has added the note, entire wall to have brick face on both sides, and he also added a handrail and guardrail at the top.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Gary, so this does address your one comment on here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
A motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to item number 11. Preliminary plat, villages at Woodland Hills, 80, excuse me, 85 lots in common area on 48.05 acres requested by SEC, Inc., property located off of East Woodland Hills Drive, tax map 29, parcel 23 and 23.01, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Bob Parks. Mr. Logan.
So this is a request by SEC for the preliminary plat approval. This is the village at Woodland Hills. And this property also was here last year, like a few of them tonight. And since that time that the preliminary plat was approved here, the applicant made some changes. One of those changes is instead of two sections, now there's just one large preliminary plat with 85 lots. Formerly, there was two sections with roughly 40 lots on each section. But they are resubmitting, and you can see the property on the screen. It's more or less shaped in a, like a backward C or reverse C, but this property does touch I-24, and it is a heavily wooded site as well. This is Park 24, also to the east and southeast. So the two developments are not, well, they'll end up touching. They're not far apart now, but when this is finished, the two developments will touch. So they are proposing, of course, this is all single-family development, and it is R2 zoning, so lot size is a minimum 10,000 square feet per lot. And you can see the zoning here on the screen. The darkest red color or brick color is R2 zoning. The darkest red color or brick color is R2 zoning. And then photos. You can see there's several stubout streets that have been existing for a long time that stubout into this property. So that's what you're seeing here. And then more wooded areas behind the existing homes. Another stubout street with a basketball goal. So this is the plat that was submitted. And you can see on this slide, this is the master plan. But you can see how the homes sort of wrap around in that backward C shape. And they'll extend all the way from I-24 back through the wooded parcel. So this is an up-close look. This is the northern part of the 85 lots. So here's I-24 and the right-of-way next to the development. And then, of course, we have, as you move further south, you have these lots arranged around. The new street will be called Bob Simon Drive. And then the remaining area here with the rest of the homes and the rest of the lots. And all of the comments have already been addressed by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything for us, Mr. Lied? Gary?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as submitted.
We have a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12 has been withdrawn, Mr. Logan.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Item number 13. Final plat Aldi. Three lots totaling approximately eight acres requested by DSG. Property located at Murfreesboro Road and Veterans Memorial Parkway. Tax map 14, parcel 72.04, C2 Highway Service zoning district. Property owned by Richland South LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this is the request for the final plat for Aldi. And this plat is being prepared for a future grocery store, of course, which is Aldi. And that site plan was approved last year as well. And the new store is approximately 19,400 square feet when it is built. So the purpose of this plat is to establish all the necessary easements for public utilities as well as the stormwater detention areas. I'll move into the slides. So on this photo, you can see, this is Veterans Memorial Drive, where it meets Murfreesboro Road. And then to the left is Lilian Buchanan Drive, where it meets Murfreesboro. So the post office is showing here on the left side of the image. And then this is the Mid-South Carpenter Trade School, which is just now about a year old. So a new building here. And then, as you zoom out, you can see lots and lots of townhomes back here adjacent and behind the Aldi site and the surrounding new parcels that'll be developed with the whole project. And then, of course, as you move on down, this is Floyd Mayfield Drive and the existing traffic light. And then Dunkin' Donuts is on the corner. So this property is right here in the center of this image. And it is our, excuse me, C2, which is Highway Service Commercial, as is most all of the property along Murfreesboro Road today, with the exception of a few parcels. So here's a photo of the lot and another photo of the lot. This is taken at Veterans Memorial Drive. So Murfreesboro Road is here to the left, and then the stop sign here for Veterans Memorial. So there's been a lot of renditions, as you know, that have been going back and forth the last couple of weeks. So on the screen should be the latest and the item that's been in your packets. So this shows Lot 1, which will be at the corner of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Murfreesboro Road. And that lot will be the location of the future Aldi store. And then off to northeast, or excuse me, northwest would be Proposed Lot 2 and Proposed Lot 3, which will come in on a later submittal. But adjacent to this grocery store lot for Aldi will be the stormwater easement area. And it's roughly 1.9 acres. And that's part of this final plat as well. And
I do have some.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lied now. Thank you.
Okay. So the performance bond is included along with the final plat. So I just wanted to get into the record that the performance bond is $753,910.56 is what they've submitted for approval. And there are three signed bids to go along with this. This is higher than two out of those three. So it meets all of our standards.
Thank you, sir. I would assume I'd have a question for Mr. Coe. Would we have to have a separate item agenda, agenda item for bond amount? Or can we include it?
No, you can be included.
Thank you. It's the first time for me, so. With that, any questions or comments? If none, we will entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to accept, or I'm sorry, to approve the final plat and accept the bond amount of $753,910.56.
Perfect. We have a motion to accept as stated. A second? Mr. Coe? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And our final item is item number 14. And we have the pleasure of having Mr. Bruce Richardson with us this evening. So we look forward to hearing from you, sir.
Well, if I had something to give you, I would give it to you. But we don't have, I do not have an updated bond list at this time. So we will have to wait until next month for that update.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you, sir. With that, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.